If you didn't hear that Tracy just asked me to run the meeting, so we'll get going on this meeting. Welcome, everybody, to the 5:30 Finance Committee meeting on October seventeenth. I think we've got nine agenda items. And not sure who else we have on in the from the committee. But we're all set. We got Counselor Letterman, President, Counselor Fenton, Counselor Wishfield in and out. And thanks to everybody who came. Okay, let's start it off with item one for fiscal year twenty-two, the final law department expense report. Is who's here to is that you Lisa that's gonna talk about that? Hello, Lisa to Susan.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Tim. I forgot how to unmute.
That's all right. No problem.
And yes, I'm I'm happy to talk about it. I believe that you all should have had it in your packet.
Yep. So why don't you go through the key points of it for us?
So the June update includes all of the, you know, expenses and outside counsel expenses that were incurred up to June thirtieth and paid out at the end of the fiscal year during that last reporting period, there was only one settlement paid in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and you'll see that reflected there as well. The total that was spent from the time that the money was appropriated until the close of the fiscal year was one million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two seventy-seven, thirty-six, of which one million, seven, one, seven, five hundred was actual settlements. There was forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-six cents spent on file costs, which included outside counsel fees, deposition fees, expert witness fees, and sheriff fees. The balance that was left at the close of the fiscal year from the amount that had originally been appropriated was three million, two hundred and forty-one thousand, seven, twenty-two and sixty-four cents, which would stand, I believe, and I would defer to Pat on this return to the general fund. We settled a total of six cases during that time period, and all of them were cases that we had discussed at one point or another in executive session, and I had indicated and a desire and an intent to get them resolved.
So, okay, so when we when this came before us, whenever that was a year or so ago, or maybe a little less, the idea was to give you advance you some money, five million, I think, was the idea that you so you wouldn't have to keep coming back to us. And this report out was to keep track of of that. So you're saying that the one point seven or so got spent, and there's about three point three or something left. But the report is showing like sideways on my computer, so I'm not really looking that closely at the numbers as opposed to is the timeframe up now that you had intended to have this money available?
No, not necessarily. I I believe we're gonna be coming back in and asking for a second appropriation. So.
Okay.
We were unable to settle all twelve cases that we had originally talked about during the balance of the fiscal year. And so we I I believe we'll be coming back in.
Okay. Well, let me throw it open for questions. Anybody have questions? Counsel President Letterman or Counsel Fenton or anyone? All right, hearing those questions. Lindsay, as a representative of the Finance Department or I'm sorry. I I see it out. Kateri, sorry. You may you got the floor, Kateri. Sorry.
Thank you, Lisa, for for the presentation. You you are from the the money that we allocated to you upfront money to settle the cases. You have a substantial amount left, correct?
There was a substantial amount not spent. It's my understanding and and Lindsay and Pat could maybe speak to this more clearly than I think I am. But at the end of the fiscal year, those funds went back to the general fund.
Yeah, it swept the free cash, just like any surplus in the general fund. So that's what happened to it.
So that was my gonna be my question. So the money has already gone back, even though Lisa, you feel there's gonna be some more cases where you'll need an appropriation.
Yes, there. Yes, and and we'll be back. You know, in the next month or two, I presume, where will I will I'm the solicitor Judge Payne will be meeting with Lindsay and and TJ and and the finance folks to determine what amount we would make the most sense to request for this year.
Okay, so the free cash sweep, that's something you do. I mean, why wouldn't you have just left the money in the law department? Or do they always have to have an appropriation percent for this?
Because the money was transferred to the general fund and not set aside in a special account, a multi-year account. That is what happens to the money, just like any other money in the general fund.
All right, and how can you tell us how many cases you might still be anticipating?
So we had started with twelve, six have been resolved. Well, an additional case has actually been resolved, but where we didn't have to pay anything. So five more cases that were from the original batch that we had talked about. And there has not been a there was a kind of a glut of cases. And then we have not had any significant number of new police misconduct cases filed.
Good. So in-house, do you have enough staff or does it always to other council?
Um, we ask about about the law department in that law department writ large is struggling, as I think a lot of departments are to attract and retain especially attorneys, but also para-professional staff. It it's very difficult.
Okay, well, thank you for your answers.
You all set, Kateri?
I'm all set, Tim. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Lisa on this first item? So Lindsay, if I could just ask, so just this, what happens with this money, the three point some odd million that did not get spent? It's like they ever source money or any money like that that's in the general fund gets swept at the end of the year?
Yes. That's correct.
Is that you, Lindsay? I couldn't hear you.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions for item one or on item ones? Okay, it's moving on to item two. This looks like a Pat Burns item, maybe, or a Lindsay item about the minimum payment for an increase in the pension payment. Could somebody take this and explain this to us, please?
Sure. Oh, sorry, Pat. I'll introduce the order, and then if there's specific questions, Pat's here to answer those. So this voted on by the board to increase the the COLA for beginning July first, twenty twenty-three from thirteen thousand to fourteen thousand dollars.
Okay. Yeah, what exactly does that mean that the cost of living adjustment is gonna add a thousand dollars to the to what? What is that thirteen thousand number or the fourteen thousand number? Can you explain that?
That is the amount that the three percent increase is based on. So in essence, it's three hundred and ninety dollars. So by raising it to fourteen thousand, that would add thirty dollars. So it would increase the amount to four hundred and twenty dollars. So that is for all retirees and survivors, and that is the base that we base the increase on. So if, let's say, I get a raise, then that three percent or two percent is based on my salary, whereas with the retirement cost of living increase, it's a base. So it can only go up to fourteen thousand. So if my pension, for instance, was ten thousand, I could only receive that three percent on the ten thousand. So it's it's a cost of living increase, but it's it's something that the board has been discussing for many years now, and with our funded status and the challenges we've had, I've been pretty much trying to caution against it. But with the with the improvements we've made and along with the unprecedented inflation and things that we're dealing with as a nation, I really could not fight the fight any longer. I I think this is something that our retirees deserve.
Okay, thank you. Before I open up for questions, is there an estimated financial impact for us on this, Pat?
The cost projected by our actuary is six point seven million dollars that will add to our unfunded liability, which as a one, one twenty-two was eight hundred and ninety-eight million dollars. So that will add that will increase that amount to nine hundred and four million dollars.
And if we had not made this change, we would have still had some increases, right?
Yes, the funding schedule as it's presently constructed and the unfunded liability as it was calculated by the actuary based the increase on the thirteen thousand. So as part of the study, and while the board was deliberating this, we asked the actuary to figure the cost or projected cost of raising that base by one thousand dollars, which is what we're proposing tonight, and they came back with that price tag of six point seven million.
Had there been no increase, would there have been no increase to our bottom line? Would there would have been zero instead of six point seven?
Or what? We we would have maintained that that eight hundred and ninety-eight million, and that was based on the present COLA base of thirteen thousand.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the floor on this one? Counselor Letterman, Counselor Fenton, Counselor Walsh? Or anybody else? That's I see Counselor Walsh and Counselor Fenton. I see your hands are up. You want to go Counselor Fenton first?
Yes.
If that's okay with Counselor Walsh, is that is that okay?
Yeah, because I'm only gonna say that I'm supporting it. So I'm interested to what you have to say.
Well, thank you. So Pat, you know, I'm I'm a little concerned about this because of our attention to the pension and and the funding ratios. I know you said that the the board has held off on making this change for some time. But when I look at this list that's provided here of the Massachusetts Retirement Systems for FY twenty-three COLA bases, you know, I see us in a current ranking here on par with other regional systems with North Adams and West Springfield and the state teachers. And ahead of places like Fall River and Lawrence. In terms of our funding ratio, I know we've gotten better, but we're still worse than Fall River. And in terms of a funding ratio, and I just it doesn't seem to be a prudent measure to be increasing the base amount when we're already just chasing after this unfunded liability every year. You know, I six billion dollars is not an insignificant amount of money. It may seem insignificant in the scope of the overall figure, but that is that is real money, and I worry about increasing benefits at a time that we're struggling to fund in the future, at least the ones that we've already committed to to pick. And so I guess that's my that's my statement. I'm really apprehensive about this. I I'm looking at the list of the funded ratios. And I'm also looking at the list of the COLA bases for twenty twenty-three. And I see Fall River, which has funded more than us, and their their base is twelve thousand, which is less than we have even today. And I don't I don't see anywhere on here the Boston teachers who who are the next closest in terms of unfunded to us. The Boston teachers are currently at forty-three percent. We're at thirty-five point six percent. And I don't see the Boston teachers on this list for FY twenty-three COLA bases. So I guess my my only question after making those comments would be, where do the Boston teachers fit in this COLA base for FY twenty twenty-three? Do we know?
I can look that up on the PIRAC website. I see that the city of Boston is at fifteen thousand. I don't that would be a separate retirement system, but I can verify the amount of the Boston teachers.
Yeah, the Boston teachers and and the and Worcester on this list is just listed as Worcester. But when I go to the PIRAC website for the funded ratios, it says that it's Worcester Regional. That's the one that's the most underfunded. They're they're forty-six point four percent funded. So I guess the other question would be if you could just check to see if that that Worcester list under fourteen thousand, is that Worcester Regional or is that just Worcester proper?
I believe that's just Worcester proper.
Okay. Oh, so does that mean Worcester Regional is the sixteen thousand under Worcester County then?
On the on the website, it says Worcester Regional is sixteen thousand and Worcester Retirement Board is fourteen thousand.
Worcester Regional is say that one more time, Lindsay. Sorry.
Worcester Regional is sixteen thousand and Worcester Retirement is fourteen thousand.
Does it say Boston teachers?
I'm looking. Hold on. I don't see them listed here.
All right, well.
Boston, no teachers, though.
Don't wanna deny our retirees the COLA adjustment, which they do get. But this is above and beyond the COLA adjustment. This is also shifting the base on which that COLA adjustment is made as a maximum. So I'm I'm apprehensive about this, Mr. Chair.
But thank you, Counselor Fenton. Lindsay and or Pat, you want to respond to that? Pat, you said you've been kind of arguing against this for a while, and this time you went with it. Do you have? Obviously, you went with it because as a member of the board, because you, as you said, it's time with inflation and things like that. It seemed like time. How do you feel about our ability to do to pay this? We have certainly done a great job. Everybody in involved in this done a great job getting back just just pension back on track and going from twenty, what were we, twenty-six percent to thirty-five now in a few years? Do you have concerns that we will would not be able to keep this that up, anything like that?
It's a tough decision, and it's something I wrestled with. We a board member did make the point to me that by increasing our active employees' pay, we're also adding to the liability. So when Pat Burns receives or a non-bargaining employee receives an increase, that is then factored in by the actuary also and builds into our liability. So that that really resonated with me as a comment that, you know.
You hadn't thought about that.
A little more palatable to me, but you know, it's a tough decision. It's as Counselor Fenton said, it's a lot of money, six point seven million dollars. It's a lot of money.
It's it's a it's a larger amount than I thought it was gonna be when you said the eight ninety-eight. And I I had no, I had nothing to go on. I just thought it ended up to more than I thought.
I had suggested that we do a one-time payment, but that isn't something that's allowed so that we wouldn't be adding the liability for all actives and current retirees doing a one-time hundred dollar payment or maybe something for a few years during these difficult times. But that's not something that unfortunately the state allows you to do. They that is all increases have to run through this COLA base formula.
So a couple of questions from me, Pat. One is our payment that was made on July first for this fiscal year, I believe, was eighty some odd million and fifty-seven million or so was from the city. So which which means next year at the nine percent increase per year, we'd be, you know, somewhere in the mid-sixties on the city side, say sixty-five million or somewhere in there. Would that how much would this? Have we got a new funding schedule yet from our actuary? Isn't this the year we're?
We do, but that is based on the thirteen thousand dollar COLA base, so I actually have it here in front of me.
So using the thirteen thousand, what does it look like that we would have to pay next year?
It's a nine point two percent increase, so right now, the total payment was ninety-three point one million, and that's all member units, and next year is a hundred and one point six million.
And what would be the city of Springfield's portion of that, sixty, sixty-three, sixty-four?
Right, it's approximately sixty percent is the city portion, twenty-seven is the school portion. And then the water and sewers about eight, and the housing authority is about four percent.
So could you just look at it like between now and seven o'clock so we can just see what, you know, your best estimate of what this does to our annual payment? And our I mean, I'm confident that we've been able to pay this, but there's a point in time where we all get scared with the the size of this annual payment. But if you don't mind, if you just think, look at that, think of that, see what the payment would be next year for the city next July first, say sixty-two million or sixty-three. And with the increase, what it would mean?
Six hundred thousand dollars from what the actuary has said increased, so three hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase on just on the city side.
Okay, six hundred. Gotcha. All right. All right. All right. Well, good questions from Counselor Fenton. Lindsay and 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 Pat, you know, if you just think about it a little bit more, we'll talk about it at seven. It sounds like Pat just answered the question I asked him to come back with. But we've got Counselor Walsh still with a hand up and also Counselor Whitfield. So Counselor Walsh, would you like to go first?
No, I don't have a question. I am gonna support the proposal. I just wondered how often do we do something like this? Pat, you said you've been fighting against it for a while. Does this come up often?
The last time we increased the base from twelve thousand to thirteen thousand was fiscal year two thousand thirteen, and that was, I believe, my second year on the board, and
It was ten years ago.
It comes up basically every year, and it's something that, you know, we'd love. It's one of those things we love to do, but we just we can't afford it, and I think it's unprecedented at times right now that something that at least should be entertained, the board voted unanimously for it. I certainly had my reservations, but something that I just felt it's something our retirees need at this point.
Okay, fair enough.
I really agree with. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Counselor Walsh. Onto Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I don't quite understand what's happening right now, Pat. So the COLA increase is because I heard the unfunded liability is gonna increase. So that's on the benefit side, Pat?
That is basically the the large payment that the city makes July first every year.
And that's gonna increase by six million?
Yes, that's over a ten-year period.
Over ten years? So annually, increase about six hundred thousand, because
Yes.
Okay. All right, so six hundred thousand, are we planning on paying that six hundred thousand in addition to what we pay each year already?
No, the next funding schedule, which we'll be adopting in two years' time, will factor that in the additional increase, so it'll be amortized over that. The eight or nine years left at that point.
So in the next two years, the unfunded liability is going to increase by whatever that six million divided by the eight months is.
Right, and I mean, it changes on a daily basis that the actuary, it was a snapshot in time back in January. And if we the city adds more employees or if we have less employees, and there's so many factors that go into how that liability is calculated, they do an assumption on how much active employee salaries are gonna increase, and if that doesn't increase as much as projected, then we could see a savings there, but conversely, we could see an increase if if salaries increase at a higher amount than what the actuary is assuming. And they also take in mortality rates and how long people are gonna live, and that could change. I know it changed slightly due to the pandemic. So it's it's extremely involved process, how the actuary comes up with the numbers.
So in essence, we could be paying an additional million dollars if we get more employees in two years hypothetically.
Correct.
Okay, and it looks like we're going into a recession. And you know, it is unprecedented at times, but it's also a difficult decision because it looks like that's where we're trending right now. And usually around that time, we struggle financially in the city also, right?
Yes. It's yeah, extremely difficult decision. I I struggled with it.
I think I do think retirees deserve it, but you know, the city in jeopardy financially in the event that we do face a recession. So I'm just gonna have to give you some more thought. Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Letterman?
Thank you, Counselor Allen. I have a question for a couple of clarifying points for both Pat and Lindsay. So the first question is, what is the actual cash benefit? to the retirees that this adjustment will have? What, what does this actually mean in their check monthly and annually?
It's $30 annually, so it's approximately 12 into 30.
$2.50 a month.
Thereabouts.
So what is the, what's the annual cost of living increase right now? Cash, like actual dollar amount?
It is $390.
So 3% on 13,000?
Yes.
And that's regardless of years served, final three, it's just 390 across the board for every retiree in our system every year?
It's, you have to be at 13,000, so if my pension was 10,000, I would only receive $300.
So is it, for, for anyone, is it more?
No, the maximum you can receive is 420. 390, proposed.
So the vote is on, so the vote is on the increase of essentially $30 annually?
Yes.
Okay, I, I wanted to get clarity on that because I think if you're reading some of the articles as a layperson, it sounds like the vote is on $1,000 annually. But that's not the case. The case is that you're increasing the base amount that the 3% is based on by $1,000, which for most retirees will mean an increase of $30 annually, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. That, those are all my questions, Councillor Allen.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. President. Good questions, everybody. I suggest that we, unless somebody has a critical question, that we move on. Spent a lot of time on that. It deserves the time, but we do have a few more things to, to discuss here. So the next item, item three, somebody take that one. Let me see, I got the wrong. Yeah, go ahead.
All right. So this is a grant for HHS. And it's for $300,000. It's prevention in early childhood services by the Department of Public Health, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. And its goal is to implement a comprehensive, multi-domain set of prevention services directed at the age range of prenatal to 11 with a parent or caregiver with a history of substance abuse, misuse and addiction. It's a competitive grant and the funding also supports the salary of the program director and the partial benefits of the program director.
Are there any questions on this prevention and early childhood services grant? Is this one of those things where we receive the money, but we parse it out to people who apply to us for it, or do we actually do the services ourselves?
You know, I don't have the answer for that. It's, it says it's a program, so I don't know if the program provides services or if the program provides funding. I'm not 100% sure. I'm not sure if.
Okay, that's fine. So if Helen will be at the meeting.
I was, yeah, that's what I was saying. I'm not sure if Helen will be here. I, I didn't hear that she wouldn't be, so.
All right, fair enough. Any questions on it beyond what Lindsay's already mentioned to us? Okay, I think we skipped over supplemental budget increase in state aid, 3.3 million. Lindsay, you want to take that or Pat?
Sure. So this is an increase in charter transportation for the school department. So what happened, same thing with us, you'll see a similar item for our budget. So the state's budget increased after the city's budget was already adopted. So this $3.3 million increase they're getting is going to increase the budget of their reserve for contingency line.
For the school department or for us?
For the school department.
For the school department. So we're just approving it on behalf of that and it's for charter school transportation?
That's correct.
Okay. Why don't we do the other one, the other supplemental budget item and then take all, if there's any questions on either one. The other one is item five, 1.1 million increase in state aid. I guess that's for us on the city side.
That's correct. So this is an increase to our UGA, which is unrestricted general government aid. It's an increase of This funding will go towards two areas. If you'll remember, we came to the city council with a $500,000 funding transfer request for the compliance monitor at the police department. So we would increase the police department's professional services line by $500,000 and then the remainder of the money would go to our reserve for contingency line. We are expecting an increase in utilities for this fiscal year, so that will be going to be set aside for those potential increases.
The, the entire 1.1 million?
623,000 will go towards reserve for contingencies and the 500,000 will go for the professional services of the police department.
Okay, gotcha. All right, good explanation. Questions from anybody on items three and five? Supplemental budget. Let me just look here and see if I, if I hear from anybody. Jesse, Councillor President, Letterman, you have your hand up. What would you, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Councillor Allen, my hand was just up from before. I will take it down.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't see anybody else. So not seeing anybody, let's move on to item six. Thank you, Lindsay, for your explanations and cultural investment portfolio grant, $20,000. Somebody take this one.
Sure, so I'll take this one as well. So this is for the city libraries. It's a Mass Cultural Council grant for $20,000. It's going to be used to fund the Mass Cultural Council for operating support. It is a competitive grant. And the department, the library intends to use the funding to support programming, materials, equipment related to music, art, literature and literacy for all the nine city libraries.
Okay, and that's just, we'll go to Molly's organization and they'll use it as they see fit or it goes to?
Yeah, so it is going to the libraries and it's specifically going to be used to provide programming, materials and equipment for art, literature, music and literacy.
Great, thank you. Any questions on that? Not seeing any, any hands up in the queue. Moving on to item seven. Order approving increase of retirement board member annual stipends to $4,500. Pat or Lindsay probably would have this one?
Sure, so this is another item that was voted by the retirement board. This is to increase the stipends for the members of the board to 4,500 from $3,000 annually.
And there are five members of the board?
That's correct.
What board is that?
The retirement board.
Pat Burns, you know, was on that representing the city and there are a few other people on it. I've been to a few of their meetings along the way. Is there any reason that was, the, the recommendation was the, the amount that it is or it's just been a while since they've had an increase? Is that it? Pat, can you take that? Is there a?
I'm not really comfortable advocating for myself, but I will say that the board is, consists of two elected members, an appointed member by the board, a member that's appointed by the other four members and myself, the ex officio member based on my title as the accounting officer for the city. This is a similar question as to, not, not in terms of magnitude of the cost, but in terms of our funding status as a retirement system and adding more expense to that, albeit not $6.7 million but an expense and this is something that there's 102 retirement boards and there's some boards that received no stipend. And there's some boards, the other boards are between 3,000 and 4,500 with the majority being at the 3,000, so I won't.
I don't.
At a point, I'm not comfortable asking for an increase myself, so.
I understand and respect your ethical feelings on that. I just wanted the information, which you just gave us the information, so thanks for doing that. Because none of us had that. So who, who sponsored this item?
The mayor.
This is from the mayor. Okay, does anybody have any questions on it? I don't see any hands up in the queue. All right, thanks for the info, Pat. And we've got, leaves us with two items, two library donations, one for 2,000, one for $50. I don't know what you guys think, but I don't think we need to really go through them here in this, in this committee meeting.
I can speak to them if you want, but if you want to skip it, we can do that too.
I mean, if it, if it takes a minute, just do it a minute so we know.
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a $2,000 donation from Maggie and Greg Tucker, which is going to be used for the purchase of adult reading materials for East Forest Park. And then there's a $50 donation from Meredith Varzaz, which is to be used for the purchase of children's books and memory of Rita Shehan Bell, also for East Forest Park.
I certainly know her. Thank you. Who was the donator of that $50?
Say that again, I'm sorry?
Yeah, who, who, who contributed the $50 donation?
That was Meredith Varzaz.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you. All right, that covers our agenda. Anybody have any questions? Anybody want to speak up? Any, any hands up in the queue? Councillor Fenton has left, Councillor Letterman has left. I'm going to say we're done. All that being said, we're, I think we're done. Let's call it. Thank you for attending this meeting and we have a couple of items that'll require a little discussion at our council meeting in 45 minutes. Thank you, everybody for attending. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, for caring.
You're welcome. Thanks, yep.